I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty P. M. We'll call the meeting to order, and our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance to the flag. If everyone would stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Would Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg is not sure. Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
And Commissioner Bozzi, he's asked to be excused. You do have a quorum with four members present, Mr. May.
Okay. Agenda. Someone cares to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Your support?
Second.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any questions on the motion or discussion? Hearing none, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next item is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We have any corrections or comments on the minutes?
The minutes of February thirteenth?
Second.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on the, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
The motion passed.
Okay. Next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. If someone's here that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item and address the commission, saying no one, we'll move on to our first business item. Number one, PPL twenty-four dash zero zero two zero. This is request for a site plan approval to construct a new multi-tenant commercial building at twenty-eight-four-zero-one Warren Road in the C-one local business zoning district. Start us off, could we begin with our, please, Mr. Ortega?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman May, Commissioners. Tonight I'll just be summarizing my review letter for this proposed development. With us tonight is the applicant's engineer, Anan Alsati, available to may have. The site itself, the entire property, I should say, that's owned by the property owner, is comprised of eight separate tax parcels, and it's totaling approximately twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine square feet. These are located at the southwest corner of Warren and Harrison Roads. The site is currently unoccupied, and it is just a vacant grass field at the moment, with a little bit of existing vegetation along that southern property.
Does that include the, that aren't going to be developed?
That's right. So technically, the property owner does own eight tax parcels, which comprise twelve, the underlying lots, that total twenty-six-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine square feet. The applicant is proposing to only locate their development on nine of those underlying lots, which approximately is four of those eight, or five of the eight separate tax parcels. So it's a little confusing, as the underlying lots were individual thirty-foot, about thirty-foot wide lots that numbered one through twelve. Some of them were combined, no doubt, for the previous development, which was the old fruit stand that used to be in this location. The fact is the fact that the applicant should combine the lots that are going to be for the new building, and then if they need to leave separate, the three individual lots that are not going to be proposed as part of this development.
Okay.
That is, will be one issue. Because the applicant is proposing to construct a new five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot, one-story, commercial building for multi-tenant commercial use with an associated parking lot on, once again, nine of the underlying platted lots. Site plan construction, excuse me, construction of new buildings requires site plan approval. The majority of, when it comes to the architecture and building design, the applicant is proposing that this building will have a brushed mason, there's going to have a brick veneer wall above with glass windows and doors. Metal panels will also be used along the roof cornice line, and then a column elements between the window placements. So in the end, the building will be modern in style, and it's similar, this property owner actually does own the multi-tenant use that was recently, well, several years ago, refurbished to the west, because is, the restaurant is a multi-tenant building that they did, this property owner owns and did refurbish. So, but they are proposing a somewhat similar building style. Since we don't have any specific design requirements for our commercial buildings not in the downtown, applicants tend to make sure that their buildings are designed appropriately for the type of market they're seeking. So this will be an attractive building, as proposed. The applicant has provided us with a site circulation plan to ensure that the site will have adequate capacity to provide access for large vehicles, including emergency vehicles and loading zone, and loading and delivery vehicles, and those turning radio and ordinance. The applicant is proposing a sufficient number of parking spaces for the proposed building. The number of parking spaces is going to be equal to twenty-nine standard, two of those will be ADA compliant, and this will be sufficient if the building is utilized for retail tenants. So the use for sales of goods and provide services, the parking will be sufficient for that. The applicant notes that at this time, they're thinking they're going to be occupying it as their main office space, so they actually will be an office use of this majority of the plan, at least currently proposed. But should, in the future, the tenant space, the building be divided into other tenants, there would be sufficient retail parking for retail parking for the site. Modest amount of landscaping along the perimeter, including a decorative fence along the Warren Road frontage with low-hanging, with low-laying shrubs, so similar to his other development, which we believe is very attractive for an urban-style development of this character. And then the applicant will be, sidewalks are constructed appropriately and, for the, for during the construction review. There are several, is, going back to number A on our, on the second sheet, is the lot combination. We would request a lot combination application that combines lots one to nine of the underlying plat. With regards to architecture, we would request that the applicant revise the elevations to indicate the colors for the proposed materials, that colors will be utilized. When it comes to loading zone and space requirement, technically, there's require a delivery loading and unloading area. The applicant, once again, has indicated that due to their proposing an office working, office tenant space, and believes there's a dedicated loading zone. The zoning ordinance does give the planning can modify or waive this requirement for a loading zone, depending on the types on the methods of delivery allowed onto the site. So we would, a dedicated loading zone is necessary or not. And if, so, if the planning commission comes to determination that loading zone is required, then the man, the site plan would have to be revised to dedicate, to indicate where loading zone would be. One other thing we wanted to make a note of, the zoning ordinance does require the construction of a masonry, six-foot-high masonry screening wall. The applicant is proposing one along the southern property line, which is adjacent to residences. However, we note that there is also a sanitary sewer in close proximity to the location of the proposed. So in order to ensure the footing will be adequately distant, separated from that sewer line and not cause any undue damage, the city engineer's review will determine where that masonry wall should go. So we would just know, ask the site planning commission, any approval for the site plan, the city engineer's approval of the location, and then if necessary, any slight modification to the building placement or parking lots, parking space placement as related to maintaining that correct location of the wall to the building and to the sewer. The benefit here is that on the northern portion of the site, the drive aisle between the property, the landscaping and the parking spaces is, is greater than what's required by the ordinance. So there is some leeway in that, that space that could be, if there needs to be a shift, because the city engineer does want a shift in the building footprint, something that could be, be done, and it only takes a foot or two to make sure that that footing is not damaging the sewer, there's review. And of course, if for some reason, there's a substantial need to change, to the planning commission to make any changes, if you grant it approval. With regards to trash and dumpster enclosure, as I noted, the applicant does own the property to the west. They are proposing utilize on that site and the enclosure, but they're also stating that they're going to be utilizing a janitorial service that will take their garbage as part of the daily cleaning. We would just recommend that the applicant provide a dumpster sharing agreement to ensure that, that relationship in perpetuity, since the applicant is not proposing a dumpster on this particular site. So they would give themselves a dumpster sharing agreement, so that way, if for some reason in the future, one or both of the properties are sold, that relationship is maintained, and this site will always have access to an adjacent dumpster. Those are the items that were outstanding. So in the end, we do believe that this proposed development will create a new retail and service opportunities for residents of the city and utilize a very long vacant lot in the city. While in substantial compliance, we do recommend, there are some outstanding items that need to be addressed. So we, if the planning commission grant approval, they can be contingent upon the items I've noted just now and that are noted at the bottom of it at the appropriate time.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Steenberg.
Brand-new building, brick veneer. Why?
Well, I think the, the term veneer right there might not be accurate. We can make sure, or you could also note, that the veneer not be a thin brick or not be any kind of product that's not substandard, because a lot of the, well, number one, actually, I should step back, technically, we don't have any design requirements outside of the downtown. So technically, the applicant can propose what they like. We do know that the, it's typically not a high-quality product, and so you could request that any brick product be a full-face brick. And the veneer is usually, is actually typical of most commercial buildings now, because they're no longer, the brick isn't a load-bearing material, so it doesn't need to be a standard brick wall. The, the underlying substructure is, is what's supporting the actual structure, and every exterior surface is a veneer of some sort. But you're right, high-quality, full-face brick.
I'd like to see that full-face brick, because if it's not full-face brick, then it's, in my opinion, substandard.
Substandard.
Right. Because it's glued in place, rather than masonry construction, which will last for the next fifty years or more. The sharing agreement, we're looking at how many square feet of building here? Five-thousand-plus-square-foot building, and we're going to share a dumpster?
The applicant has, it's a level of frequency of collection, they feel that's appropriate, whether that's sufficient or not.
Yeah, I had a comment about the dumpster agreement, too, because the dumpster on the other property is at the furthest west. So you're talking about traveling at least a couple hundred feet down to the dumpster to be able to use it, which doesn't seem reasonable.
Efficient. I did point that out.
Never heard of a clean company that takes the trash away with them. I mean, it may be something new, it may be something, never had it here, I've never heard of that in thirty years being here, so.
I did have this discussion with the owner, but they, we wanted to make this present, technically, within the zoning ordinance, I don't, we don't have anything that actually requires a dumpster be on-site, just that they have it, if a dumpster is on-site, it is enclosed. I would also point out that technically, as a property owner, the taxes that they pay includes a two-cubic-yard dumpster, so they're already paying for a two-cubic-yard dumpster that could be utilized on-site. The issue, of course, with that is finding a location and then finding a, building the enclosure. We've been running into this lately, something that we need to look at in terms of amending the zoning ordinance to address this issue, but right now, there's no specific requirement, unless you feel that the site plan approval is, the criteria for site plan approval merits than the need for an onsite dumpster.
Hardship for the owner-operator here, but build, companies come and go, but build go, and next year, they could not exist, or they're too expensive, or, or, or. But if there's a dumpster on-site to support this building, then they go hand-in-hand, and they'll be there forever, no matter what the other companies do.
Mm-hmm.
And a special use permit, we don't even have any assurance of exactly what's going to go in there. I mean, it's everything in the, I mean, what, what it tentatively might be, might be used for is one thing, encompasses quite a few different items, and three of those items all need the support of a dumpster to take care of those businesses.
Let's say we approve this the way it sits today, and in six months after they have their CFO, what's going to stop them from dropping a dumpster without a closure?
Code enforcement would, would issue them, communicate with them that they need to put that in an enclosure. I will say that, that's, you know, that those efforts are owing in the city whenever someone does do that, and it doesn't hap, it happens sometimes. The closure can be minimal, it can be extensive. Part on the administration to try and get someone to build that enclosure is not cheap, but it is something that we, that is required whenever a dumpster is on-site. Apply for a carryout restaurant or something to that effect, that requires special land use approval in C-one, you could require them to have a dumpster at that, like you said, Kelly, if they wanted to dump, put a dumpster on the site in the future, the city administration would make the effort to let them know that it has to be inside.
At a later date, too, it might take up one of their dedicated parking spaces, which would put them under the required amount.
That is true. With regards to required parking, whenever a multi-tenant building goes in, anytime a CFO is applied for, we make sure that the proposed use and their specific parking requirements are sufficiently provided on-site. So for example, with this being a, if it is, the entire site is utilized for office, technically, they only need fifteen parking spaces for the office use.
It's not zoned strictly for office use, it could be changed later.
Correct. Exactly. You're exactly right. So I was going to say, like, if they did, point, but I, but basically, what would occur is, I would let them know through the CFO process that the, for sufficient to handle, the parking would not be sufficient to handle, and they'd have them in office use or something to that effect. So making sure the mix of uses, because the property owner is attempting to get a right tenant mix based on the market, with probably tenants that have too much of a parking, the city lets them know that mix of uses is not going to work, because the site doesn't have parking spaces. So we do that very often, you know, working with that, with the.
It seems with a little forethought, we could possibly.
True.
Put the dumpster where it needs to be and.
What we've run into in the past, and this has happened more than once over, is that this, thirty years that we made that start to happen is with new construction or extensive remodeling. What has happened in the past is, if there's no dumpster there, and then a tenant from now that requires a dumpster, he just puts a dumpster out in the open. And to get that corrected is very onerous, onerous for the city.
It is.
Later, it'll take way too long and a lot of city resources back and forth, back and forth. It's in C-one, a good many of those would require a dumpster to do business. And if there's multiple tenants, one of the tenants here is talking about a janitorial service that carries the trash away with them. I'll go along with that program? I don't know. It's, it's not typical, and it's not something I'm comfortable with. I don't like the, I don't like the face brick, and I don't like the fact of no dumpster.
Okay. Well, why don't?
Okay.
We allow the applicant to, if you're done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is representative for the applicant here would like to speak?
And the applicant is here also, this is Sam, correct? Yeah, right.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. I'm Sam, I'm with Vicoming Properties. I'm the owner of the property. I also own Strip Center, it's directly to the west.
Okay.
I've heard what you have to say about the dumpster enclosure, totally understand the concern. We are planning on occupying the building when it's constructed for our office use, and we do, at other locations, use a janitorial company that comes out and removes our trash. Now, yes, I can definitely understand that I can't guarantee that a janitorial company's going to be around forever, so I understand the concern. At the end of the day, if it's something that it's going, that's going to make the planning commission comfortable, I'll proceed with, hopefully revising our plans and putting in an enclosure if we could make it work. I just didn't feel it was necessary, given our use, and that we're going to be occupying the property.
Okay. Question, how many storefronts do you have to the west that you own?
We have, well, I have one tenant occupies three, actually, six, I'm sorry. One tenant occupies three, another occupies two, and then one occupies one on the end cap. So it's six stores.
Okay. But there's five potential storefronts there, and you have three tenants currently.
Correct, yeah.
And how many potential storefronts, the existing structure or this new structure?
Although we haven't submitted, you know, interior plans yet showing the layout of the building, and having an open layout, where we're not going to demise the space, it's just going to be one big box.
And you expect to occupy that?
I do. There will be rooms, but it's not going to be demised into individual.
It'll be hit one door?
One central door, yeah. Yeah. Right in the center, ten-foot, double-door, really elegant.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, of course, that has to be approved by fire marshal as far as travel distances and things like that for the exiting.
So one main entrance, you look at like individual suites to lease out?
Individual suites, yes.
So you could potentially have twenty different business owners in that?
Offices, office-related people that, I own another building, in fact, on Middle Belt in Livonia, we have the same setup. I've got a janitorial company that comes out, enters everybody's suite, empties their trash, hauls it away. That's actually the business that I, that I'm in, aside from the fact that I'm landlord for twenty-five years and own nearly eighty properties, I am in the business of leasing out suites.
Okay.
And why the face brick when you're doing new construction?
Quite honestly, that surprised me as well, that I'm not crazy about that either, so we will be changing that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that can be one of the contingencies if we approve this.
I just think that might have been an error on our end, it's not something that I asked for.
Okay.
Chairperson May?
Yes.
Just two items. On the dumpster enclosure, I would imagine to make the building more marketable in the future, so I think for you, we make it for the future.
For the future, sure.
Just a comment, I suppose. As far as, you're saying with the brick veneer, I guess, Mario, like you had asked about color, that's what I was going to ask.
Yes.
So is that something that you're also prepared to put into the plan?
Yes, definitely. It will be, most likely, the plan is to go with a darker color. I meant charcoal color, something like, not, not necessarily exactly what I did with the west renovations, but something really darker. It just, I feel like it's more modern.
My last question, you said one door, but the plan shows two doors.
Is it two that we put on there? That's, which is, yeah.
Two doors, yeah.
It was most likely the architect thought it was necessary, which is fine. And I believe both doors, if he did put two doors, they're the same level height, that's, yeah, that's what we're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I do have one question. What is, what is the intention with the other three lots? What are we envision with those, the extra lots? Just so we know.
You know, we didn't feel they were necessary for the development, and, I mean, they were there in case, at some point, they were needed in the future. There wasn't really any plan for it.
Okay. All right. I just was wondering, number one.
Future development?
And of course.
It's always nice to have options in the future.
It could be parking expansion.
Right.
Yeah, parking or someplace to put a dumpster.
Or that. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, bigger, it's bigger, will trigger when counting, you know.
Yes.
Organizes or something.
I know.
You know, you know how it is.
Yeah. Bigger areas, yes.
There was also a discussion item around site circulation, so I don't know if we want the applicant to.
As far as loading?
As far as loading zone, just loading zone, whether you feel like.
Yeah, we need to find out.
No dedicated loading zone.
I was suggesting that we should discuss it, so I just thought maybe while the applicant's up, any thoughts on?
Again, just because of the use, we didn't feel loading zone would be needed. I don't recall ever having the need for a loading zone with an office space at any other property, and that's the reason why we didn't feel it was needed here.
It looks like you don't have one to the property in the west.
No, we don't.
Okay.
And it's never been an issue.
Yeah, for the, for the type of businesses that you're talking about.
Right.
It's probably unnecessary.
Unnecessary, exactly.
All right. Did you have anything else you wanted to say about your application? Okay.
I look forward to the development. It's going to be a beautiful building.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, now we'll open it up to the commission for comment.
Question, question to Mario, before I make my decision for this dumpster enclosure, we have a roughly five-and-a-half-thousand-square-foot building here. Could you remind us what is allowed in a C-one?
Yes. It's primary retail uses, so any sales of retail products, also service uses, so salons and barber shops, but also repair facility, repair services of small-scale items, watch repair, that sort of thing. In the C-one, then, they do, they do allow, carryout restaurants are allowed if they require, if they obtain special land use approval. So there were no, and that's the only type of restaurant that's allowed in C-one, so no restaurants would be allowed in the district. It would require a rezoning to another district in order to allow for standard restaurants, say. And then, any other item, issue, uses are and shall include offices, of course, offices are permitted by right, you know, business executive administrative offices, also business and technical schools. We have had some interesting people providing driving schools in the area. Financial institutions are permitted without drive-through facilities, permitted by right in the district, and then medical or dental clinics and offices, health or exercise clubs, meaning something like a, what the, like the Orange Theory or something, something that fits in a, that's like a studio situation, you know, fifteen-hundred square foot, and then one trainer providing classes, that kind of thing. Libraries, museums, public-owned buildings are permitted in the district. I already went over retail stores and, and also service uses, and then an arcade, permitted by right. And then special use approval would be required for any kind of automatic washer, dryer, or dry cleaning establishment. Financial institution with drive-throughs, technically, you can request special land use approval. Based on the current configuration, I don't see that occurring, just because there's not enough stacking space. Funeral homes, group daycare homes or childcare centers, I mentioned carryout restaurants, and then veterinary clinics. All those, all those last uses require special use approval, they would have to come before you before and provide a configuration that would work for that particular type of use, including their hours of operation before they could operate on the site.
Okay. What I hear is a lot of items that could potentially require a dumpster with a five-and-a-half-thousand-square-foot building. If the owner operates that forever as his office, I see no problem and no dumpster required. But I don't see that as happening at long, forever.
No, no way we can guarantee that's going to happen.
That's true.
And it would appear as if there's room in the corner of the parking area, that dumpster could be placed back there with a, a small dumpster with an enclosure.
Yeah. So I'd, I'd like to see a dumpster, and the owner's already going to be paying taxes on one in the first place, and it might also actually be a favor to you, because in the future, five years down the road, you don't want to use that for your office, you have a more sellable building, because at that point, you would definitely be required to put a dumpster in. And I think it would be better to do it right up front. If you keep the building forever, it's not going to get that much use, but if someplace down the road, you decide that you don't need that office, or you need a bigger one someplace else, then you have a more sellable building to a wider array of, of potential leases or.
Did you have any other?
No, that's it.
Was there any other comments or questions?
Just one more question for Mr. Ortega. I noticed in your letter, you, you reference the location of the screening wall.
Yes.
Apologize if you said that during your. Apologize if you said that during your update. What was the topic on the screening wall that?
So, the, the detail on the site plan doesn't have sufficient enough information to determine if the footing required for that masonry wall will be sufficient distance away as required by the city engineer from the existing sanitary sewer there. You really won't be able to know that until they provide a, a survey that has accurate location of the utility line and then actual location of the, of the, of the.
And that would have to be approved by the city engineer then.
Exactly. So, the city engineer could, so, screening wall is required. The ordinance actually specifically states that if there's any type of utility or easement that prevents the, a screening wall from being on the location, then the screening wall just has to be moved. So, in this case, it would just have to be moved to the north for sufficient distance away from the, as determined by the city engineer for the, for the wall. And then, if that occurs, there is some room that, where the building footprint, even if necessary, needs to be modified. Because as proposed, their applicant is proposing rear entry exit doors from the building. So, you need a minimum distance of at least five feet between the back of the wall, back of the building and the screening wall. But there is enough space, I believe, between the drive aisle and the property line to shift the building further north and provide everything with adequate distance. I would just recommend that, that note be included as part of your approvals, that the city engineer verify an adequate location for the screening wall.
Okay.
Was there anything else? Did you have anything?
No, I think we covered it.
Okay. Well, I.
I wrote down the.
How, just a second. How do you feel about the inclusion of a dumpster in the, a small dumpster in the corner of your parking lot in the back?
Well, we're sitting here, we're going to change stuff to show the dumpster.
Okay, great. Because I think, I think that's a necessary addition to the plan. So, we're talking about adding a dumpster to the contingencies and also the face brick.
Lot combination.
And, well, yeah, well, that's already included in the notes.
Forgive me, I didn't include that.
We go through the, the notes. In addition, we add the dumpster and the face brick.
And. City engineer approval.
The loading zone is unnecessary, that was in Mr. Ortega's.
Yes, we have, we haven't really discussed that. Have we decided that the loading zone is not necessary or, or is it, do you think it is?
No, I do not think it is.
I don't think it is. In a C1, I don't think it is.
I don't really either. Do you, do you agree?
No, I don't think it needs it.
Okay.
And the five foot required space.
But we should.
To the wall may already be pushing it tight in that. If the engineer has to move things a foot or two in order to not bump into the sewer lines.
Yeah, and.
So, I have four items.
If we go with the modifications or the contingencies lifted, we already have listed the approval by the city engineer and the fire marshal, so.
Right.
If someone cares to make a motion with these contingencies.
One, one moment.
Yes.
There was no public comment or question to ask?
We don't normally have public comment.
Sorry. Sorry.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Make a motion for approval noting the lot combination, which is already stated in our paperwork here, and city engineer approval, so we don't bump into the sewer lines, which is already on our paperwork here, and changing our paperwork from face brick to face, or from brick veneer to face brick, and from no dumpster to a dumpster enclosure. And I'll leave that up between you and Mario to determine the best location. You probably don't have a whole bunch of choices there, but whatever you think will work.
We have a couple of other items that need to be included here.
And also, we need a cut sheet for the lights to show that we're not spilling them into people's bedroom windows on the other side of the six-foot wall.
And make sure they can't be adjusted.
Yeah. Adjustable. Does that do it? We're not doing this one, because we're not seeking a sharing agreement.
We don't have a sharing agreement and.
And we already have fire marshal and city engineer as.
And we have fire marshal and city engineer approval of the plans.
Right.
Okay. Could you read that motion back to us when you get it all?
This is a motion by Commissioner Steenberg to include the elevation material to be full, to be face brick, to not include the zone, loading zone. A screen wall location to be determined by the city engineer. Light fixture cut sheets, those would include the not ability to adjust. To include a dumpster enclosure. Then also the engineer and fire marshal approval prior to the final issuance of the building permit.
Very good. Do we have support?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? Would you take the role, please?
Do you want any, any public comment? It was listed on.
We don't normally do public comment.
Okay. All right. So, we've got a motion and support by Commissioner Steenberg, the first to vote. Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner, Chairperson May.
Aye.
The motion does carry.
Okay, your motion's carried. Contact Mr. Ortega, and you can work out the details with him. Thank you.
And welcome. Good luck, thank you.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Our next order of business is zoning ordinance amendment. Discussion of proposed amendment regarding parking on residentially zoned lots. Mr. Ortega, you want to start us off there?
Yes, based on the request from the planning commissioners, we have presented you with the current section as, that was, that was recently amended by, by, by your recommendation and city council approval for the residential part districts, parking and driveway standards. However, they did make one minor deletion of your proposed text. And, and I, forgive me, I wanted to at least have this in front of you, so that way we could discuss further, because what you're seeing in front of you is what the city council did deny. So, I wasn't sure what other approach you wanted to take. There are some options we can do. We can add more graphics that could show like the percent, like how much a vehicle could park in front of the driveway. But, excuse you, I'll just step back for a second. The, the sentence that was removed and the sentence is right now showing in this draft in front of you says, "A driveway for residences with no garage or a detached garage, a driveway shall extend in front of the house by no more than twenty percent of the width of the front of the house." So, that's what was originally.
Did I say may extend?
That's, there you go. That's a very good point right away. You should say may. So, that's one aspect of it. But this is as it was proposed to council.
As it was proposed before, it didn't include attached garages?
Correct. Because when, when you look at the attached garage standards, because there is a lot, a little bit more leeway for them, because the language states lots with attached garages are permitted in one driveway located between the attached garage, the closest side lot line, and the front lot line. So, a lot of times, the attached garage, at a minimum, they should have at least three feet on one side, based on our minimum setbacks. Sometimes they might have nine foot or more. So, they, they tend to, if they have it available to them, putting extra hard surface in front of the garage, between the garage and the side lot line, and then therefore, that's where they get their, they can have the opportunity to have extra parking space in their driveways and extend it that way. I know we talked about that a little bit, but I think that area, and that reflects basically what's, what's current language. And we really didn't change that that much. Because I believe in our discussions, what we were trying to tackle was, we have lots that sometimes are only forty foot wide. And, and in the, in these lots, a lot of times then, you've got a detached garage in the rear. So, by this ordinance currently stating lots with no garage or detached garage shall be permitted in one driveway, where right now, we say shall not exceed twenty feet in width, because usually it's about trying to get from the street to the back detached garage. When you have a forty foot wide line house, we still have a twelve foot combined side yard setback. One of those can be a little, as small as three foot. So, you put three foot on one side, you put that nine foot on the other side. The nine foot typically is where the garage, where the vehicle can pass. So, we also, then having that standard where the, the paving shall not be in front of the house is what, you know, basically gets, is, is the situation that the residential property owners are placed on forty foot wide lots. They, in theory, could have a driveway twenty feet in width, but then the space between their side lot line and the edge of their house is only nine, could be as small as nine feet. So, therefore, then they, in the front, they only have that one drive aisle situation. A lot of times, people, when they have the space, want to have that extra eight foot, if you will, I would think. I mean, I personally, I think for them to function, they need to be more. You probably want it more like ten foot, so that way you can have enough space to open your doors and everything. So, a car can off to the side in some location, and then a vehicle can still drive in the driveway to the back of the backyard, to the back garage, detached garage, that sort of thing. So, we have seen instances in, on, on these type of lots where property owners tend to have contractors, and sometimes they do. Maybe they were approved with a flatwork permit, maybe not, maybe it's done on the weekend. But you could travel to the city and see these driveways that are twenty foot wide, and they go in front of the house, meaning the, how it fronts, yeah. Please interrupt me, yes.
Just to comment, and I recall the conversation, and at least in my mind, and I wish I could share my screen here with the group, but I was thinking about the nineteen fifty's style brick ranches that are all over the city where individuals have snow days and have a hard time figuring out what to do with their vehicles. I wasn't thinking about some of the homes, like for example, on John Hawk, where the entire front lawn is paved.
We have one on Buck on a forty foot lot. He didn't need a ruler. He blacked out from wall to wall.
As I recall, when we were trying to construct this amendment, it was limited to twenty percent of the width of the front of the home. And the idea was that the resident would have some flexibility to add more parking, but they could not, the ordinance paved their entire.
Paved the front yard?
Yeah. I think maybe the addition of a graphic showing a typical, maybe fifty-five foot wide lot.
Yeah.
What twenty percent, twenty percent would look like, you know.
I got it here.
But we still have a lot of forty percent wide lots in the city.
I took the liberty of going on Google and actually looking to see how many and what was existing. Some before, some afters. So, council could have actually some pictures to look at to see what they would look like. And what most people would be doing is, usually on those ranches that he's speaking about, they'd be paving about four feet, that's grass. They already got a three-foot service walk, so that most people would be paving about four feet. I guess my concern is, what I don't understand is, we allow circle drives, which is entirely more concrete than what they would be adding in twenty percent of their house. And you can have three vehicles stacked in a circle drive, and it's legal to park on that. With all of the discussion that was at city council with people complaining about parking over the sidewalks, I just thought this might be a remedy for some people to be able to get their vehicles off the streets, not be blocking the sidewalks. I think the biggest thing is, we've got to remember, we're not in nineteen fifty anymore, and it's not one car. I think the average car in Garden City, or the average house in Garden City's probably got three, maybe more cars. And you'll see, and I'll, I'll give this for council to have for reference, but there are pictures in here of houses with this already done. Houses with circle drives, with driveways on both sides of the circle drive. So, and, and I know that the ones with circle driveways and driveways on both sides were permitted because they're new builds within the last few years, so.
Quite a few of them by me.
Yeah. So, I think if we're going to allow the new builds to be able to do it on the larger lots, we should be able to give some of our residents another option for parking on their lots.
Yeah, it is a tough question to ask, because.
Maybe rather than saying twenty percent, maybe we should go with a definite figure like extending four feet in front of the house.
Because I was about to say.
That would be more acceptable.
I think so, because we have a number of different quote-unquote standard with lots in Garden City.
Yeah, because the driveway on your screen, for instance, is already probably a foot away from the house, so that gives you five feet and maybe room to park two cars side by side.
The problem you'll have with that is where that, his step is. In a lot of those homes, if you only allow them to go four feet from the edge of the home, you'll be in the center of the step. Unless we're going to allow them to have four feet of driveway.
Well, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be right up to the step, I don't think. I mean, that doesn't.
Well, that driveway is also going to propose as a service walk on most houses.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be both.
So, if we.
And I recall this conversation. I think we said something like five feet, but no more than twenty percent. But then we started doing the math, saying it doesn't really matter, but.
When you get through a forty foot wide lot, twenty percent is half the house.
Well, a forty foot wide lot, most houses are only twenty, twenty-two feet wide.
Twenty percent of the house, not twenty percent of the lot.
Right.
Yeah, but even on.
Oh, that's true. It's whether it's a house or a lot.
Your house width is about twenty feet. So, you could only put four feet in front of that house anyway.
That's the conversation we had, right?
Right.
If you have a smaller home, you're going to be a couple of feet.
That's the thing, that, doing the math again, because this is where we were last time. On a forty foot wide lot, I would go the way of twelve foot has to be set away for the setbacks. So, in theory, the house itself could be twenty-eight feet wide, so, to maximize it. So, then twenty percent of twenty-eight feet is five and a half foot. It's five and a half feet. So, you're back in this situation of it's five, but Fred, you have a good point. Maybe saying a specific number, another five foot or four foot.
We say five feet, it might be more acceptable.
Right.
And we can also include a graphic to show what that would look like on a typical house.
Right, because it could be that, that maybe the council members felt twenty percent, and they weren't thinking of the forty foot configuration. And, you know, I mean, that is a good, good point. We're talking about we're leaning on the forty foot configuration of those situations. But I guess in theory, well, no, you're right. If we had a number, then that would definitely allay any fears, because if people have sixty foot wide lots, and then, then they had a larger house than if it's twenty percent in front of the house.
They might have a little longer ranch.
Right.
I mean.
Then have a longer ranch.
Bigger lots and longer houses.
There's more.
Twenty percent might end up being considerably more than that.
Right.
I, I think that might be a, a good way to approach it is by a hard number, not rather than a percentage.
I, I think we need, my personal opinion, we need to keep it to the percentage, because if we put a hard number on it, on a lot of these lots, like I said, you're going to have the driveway into the step. It's going to be right in the middle of the step on the porch.
Meaning that it should go past it, or that it should?
Meaning that.
Why is that a bad thing?
Well, then how do people get on the step? They got to walk on the grass to get on the porch?
Well, if it goes past it, why is that any better?
Because usually about eight feet is the edge, six to eight feet is the edge of the house to the edge of the porch, where you would have your service walk.
Yeah, okay.
So, this is a three-foot service walk, that's four feet, so that'd be seven feet. So, you're saying to only allow five feet. So, then we allow them to do five feet, which would make all this grass, and they wouldn't be able to get on their porch.
You'd be able to park two cars there, but you eliminated the service walk.
Yes. That's why I thought the twenty percent.
Well, if you do that, either way, you're going to eliminate the service walk in most places, because the porch is normally close to the driveway. Some places it's not, but a lot of them are like that.
I guess my biggest concern is all the circle drives that we have in the city. I guess my biggest concern is all the circle drives that we have in the city, and we weren't concerned about concrete coverage on those. We're worried about eight feet, possibly six to eight feet in front of a house, instead of a, an entire circle drive that's ten to twelve feet wide, sixty feet or so.
Well, I think, I think the conundrum in that situation is that the circle drive, by necessarily having a proper turning radius, and then, and then we also require in the, in these ordinances, that there's a certain amount of green space between, what it's supposed to be, between the property, front property line and the edge of the circle drive. So there's green space in that area, so it's truly a circle, or a half circle, I should say. So by the time you try and do that, a lot of these smaller lots, they just don't have the lot width to accommodate a circle drive. And because of that, you see the circle drives on larger, typically larger lots, and then what you have is that the percentage of the lot that's covered by hard surface ends up being smaller. The total amount of square footage might be bigger on these bigger lots, but because their lot, their lot width and depth is larger, the percentage that's covered by hard surface is less. And that's, and not to get into that, but that was something we actually didn't even broach, is this idea of allowing for a lot of hard surface is going to increase the runoff. But setting that aside again, I did a little bit of the math on these forty foot wide lots, if we let them have the twenty percent and their standard driveway, then about thirty-six percent of a forty foot wide front yard is covered with, with hard surface, thirty-six percent. I haven't done the math yet on a larger lot, but we could, maybe that's something, that information that we can bring back to you, like having an analysis of what's an acceptable amount of percentage of hard surface in a front yard?
Do we not have an ordinance on that now, a percentage?
No, because, no, because the way we hang our hat on is the idea that nobody, that you're not supposed to have hard surface in front of the house, except if you have a circle drive. Then, then that's the loophole that people can do. If their lot is wide enough to accommodate all those requirements of a circle drive, then they can, they can do it.
So is there an ordinance or a building code right now that somebody can't concrete their whole front yard?
There is a requirement that they can't have, that the drive, well, by nature of the fact that they're saying the driveway, they only allowed one driveway in this certain width and depth. And then we do have another standard that says they can't have hard surface in front of the, in front of the house, except for.
Except for the circle.
Circle drive.
And this, that's where I'm caught up on this, so we're going to allow that circle drive, but not allow twenty percent in front of the house, which would be less than a circle drive.
What if we, what if, just to move this forward, we said twenty percent, but no more than five feet?
Mm-hmm, okay.
Would that include the service walk?
No. Because I don't, a lot of people ain't going to be able to do it. They won't have the room.
The, the ordinance would be silent as to whether you could put concrete around the stoop.
Right.
Right? That wouldn't be the driveway anymore.
So you could have a.
The service walk and the driveway?
Yeah.
So you're still going to get the eight feet.
Because that's the thing, we don't have a requirement for a service walk, and, you know, there are some lots that actually don't have a service walk, because they basically use their driveway as theirs, as their walkway, because they don't want to have it for some reason. And it could be the configuration of the house itself. Maybe the house doesn't have a front door on that front facade, and they have it on the side, because sometimes you have your L configuration houses. Trying to think if there's other ways to address it, because I do like the idea of, you know, allowing twenty percent, but more than five feet. But I hear what you're saying, Kelly, that, you know, then how is that additive that will help the situation? Because if it's just an extra five foot, how can you fit a car on there? You can't.
What number are you good with?
I was the twenty percent. I thought we just had to take it back with council with some, to show them what people were doing, to explain to them. I think that's why they didn't pass it last time. They didn't have any visuals. They thought people would be parking their car a long way on a, on a pad, so you could have an eight foot wide pad all the way over the window. That, that was some of their questions. I think we just need to give them more visuals, because it made it past us last time with the twenty percent.
Mm-hmm.
But on a twenty-eight foot, on a forty foot lot, a twenty-eight foot wide house, it's five point six feet.
Right.
Then that would be the maximum. On a sixty foot lot with a thirty foot house, depending on which side the driveway's on, because your driver can't exceed twenty feet.
Yeah, that's a six foot, yeah.
I think if you do the math, it works out proportionately.
So on a sixty foot wide lot, technically in the building envelope, so the build, the house could be as wide as forty-eight feet, because you just take out twelve foot for the side yards. So then twenty percent of that is nine point six feet.
So what if we said no more than six feet? Twenty percent or no more than six feet, just to move this forward? That way you have a cap on it.
That's fine with me.
What we can do is bring back visuals to show, because if, Kelly, it sounds like you might have gotten impacted.
The visuals might help, maybe there was a lack of understanding.
Of where.
About what they were voting on.
And what people were trying to really do, as far as what they're filling in.
Why don't, why don't we change it in that respect, and, do you want to make a?
Twenty and five?
Yeah, twenty and, what is it?
We said twenty and six.
Twenty and six?
Twenty percent, but no more than six feet.
Six, okay.
Okay, that'll, that's room enough to park a car, right?
Well, that should give somebody a nine, says fifteen feet for a driveway on a nine foot driveway, depending, or, and you got to leave them there, can't exceed twenty feet. I mean, yes. We had that before, correct? Couldn't exceed, your driveway couldn't exceed twenty feet?
We did. Actually, it's in there right now.
In there now.
Yeah. So that needs to stay.
Yeah. Okay. So we can make those.
You want to make a motion about that?
I'm sorry?
Do you need a motion to that effect, or?
I, I'm good with, with your direction. We can make the edits, we can provide graphics.
Yeah.
And then, so looking at the, so you can see the, the language one more time before we call a public hearing. That's sufficient.
All right, then.
Thank you.
We, we good? We move on?
I did, I did just have one other question, just what about the service walk, though? A lot of people are, a lot of people are filling in the four foot area between. That gives them seven feet. The service walk is three, four foot, you know? What do we do? Make them saw off a foot of this? You know, so that's my only, my only concern, because where I've seen it the most, it's not forty foot lots I've seen it the most, it's supposedly fifty foot lots in the kind of the southeast quadrant of the city, appears quite often. So I just was wondering your thoughts.
That's technically a driveway, is it?
Well, when you join the two slabs together, who's going to keep them from parking on it?
I eliminated mine. I eliminated the walk and extended the size of the porch, and just moved the walkway to the driveway. And I have nineteen feet to play with between the house and the, and the lot line, but I also have a block wall to contend with. So I park tight to the wall and let the wife park tight to the other, and it leaves three and a half feet to walk between the cars and go to the front porch.
Okay. Okay.
Did that answer the question? So we're leaving the service walk? Because I didn't get anything out of it.
I mean.
I don't have a clear understanding either.
Would you want to have a text in there that says, no combination of driveways and service walk shall exceed twenty feet? Or is that too?
Twenty feet or twenty percent?
Well, twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
So the driveway and the service walk cannot exceed twenty feet.
Right.
Yeah, but standard width is ten foot for a driveway, as a general rule. Slabs are ten by twenty.
But they'd still be.
Ten by ten.
They'd still be shrunk to the twenty percent or six feet, and then usually a service walk is three feet, correct?
Right.
So you're at nine feet, you're at, you're still under twenty feet, you're at nineteen, you're at nineteen feet.
For a single lane driveway?
Correct.
For a double lane driveway?
They couldn't do it, because they're already a double lane driveway, they're already at seventeen feet.
They've already got twenty feet, so the maximum would be twenty feet? Is that acceptable? Twenty foot maximum width?
Which we have already.
Pretty sure we have that, yeah. Because I understand.
That would specify that the service walk is included in that calculation. Would that be good, or?
In the twenty.
In the maximum twenty foot?
No, I think we have to keep the service walk out of the equation.
I agree.
Because that could be wholly separate.
True.
If, if the porch is in the middle of the house, they're probably going to put a walk on it.
If it's butted up against the driveway, it becomes driveway.
Well, my, my porch exit on the driveway, it doesn't exit towards the street, it exit.
Yeah, a lot of them do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, in essence, I don't have a wholly dedicated man walk or a service walk. I'm using the driveway for that. So I think we should kind of keep the service walk out of the equation, because what about the person that's got the forty foot long house and the porch is right in the middle?
And the service walk, we're.
He's going to want a service walk.
We're silent on the service walk today, right?
True.
I don't think the service walk matters if we put a maximum of twenty feet on the driveway. On most of the houses, they'll be, I can pass this down, but that service walk where they're filling in will, will be within five feet of the driveway.
Okay.
Like that's all.
If the porch is on that.
If the porch is on that, and the people that have it aren't going to be able to pour all the way to that other service walk anyway, because they're restricted within the six feet or twenty percent. So they would never be able to do it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So six and twenty.
And the service walks are out? They, they stay where they, we're not even talking about service walks.
And don't say service walk.
Yeah. Don't say service walk.
Okay. Because it becomes a driveway once you put a car on top of it.
Yeah, sure.
So I think that just confuses it.
Are we all clear with this now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the first time.
Okay, next item is housing readiness grant master plan amendment.
So thank you for those that were able to attend the open house for the master plan. Hopefully you saw the, all the residents that were able to come and participate. After the, after the open house, we wanted to continue the public engagement. So the questions that we had at that, at the open house, were converted into a digital survey, and they were put on the city's website. And so that community survey was up from February first to the nineteenth. So in total, there were actually one hundred and fifty-five responses to our, our open house with regards to this. So before you is just a summary of the individual results that we've gotten, based on the questions we presented, you know, and it addressed issues in the, in the open house about the preferences for the housing types, you know, ranging from the housing for all life stages to options in the downtown Garden City and beyond. We wanted to gauge residents and stakeholders' ideas on what type of housing should be talked about in terms of allowing for, encouraging in the city. So they, we did get some interesting feedback and takeaway. Some of our key takeaways was the fact that thirty-six point four percent indicating that more assisted and independent senior living options would be appropriate. There are residents that are looking for those other alternative housing options than single family. But they did manage that indicate that they, the residents are actually more supportive of what they might term as gentle density housing types. So not necessarily a quadplex or a triplex structure, but townhouses or cottage houses, meaning smaller, single family homes as part of an overall development, similar to the cottages down at Meadows? I know it's.
Meadows.
Yeah, the Meadows, right here on Meadowbelt. And then residents, we did find that they were supportive of having residential uses in the downtown, and even looking at having additional square foot stories to accommodate, create a more active and vibrant downtown with residents in close proximity to the potential future businesses. So, you know, some of those questions, some of the results were, you know, when we, we asked people, what are the most positive aspects of living in Garden City? Forty-eight percent like the city's location in the greater Detroit region. That was, we thought that was relatively high, but definitely public safety and sense of community were the highest factors that people enjoy about living in Garden City. Some other aspects to point out, just asking people open-ended questions about Garden City in general, the thing that stood out the most was that they enjoyed their close connections with neighbors in, in the city that's created by the current housing. We did want people to think about the different housing types alternatives, and that included asking everyone where the type of homes and places they've lived in their, over their lifetime. There was a high percent of respondents, forty-five point, excuse me, over ninety percent actually have lived in single family dwelling units, which is the predominant dwelling unit type in the city. However, we note that there were still forty-three point five percent of residents indicated that they've, they've lived in low-rise apartments with five stories or less. So that type of housing unit isn't necessarily unfamiliar to, you know, almost forty, to over forty percent of residents in the city. So it's something that they can see as a type of housing product they were willing to live in, at least at some point in their, in the course of their life. We then asked, we then asked people specifically, what types of housing do you think might be missing the most in Garden City? And once again, this is where assisted and senior living options were pointed out. Townhouses ranked at thirty-six point four percent, and the cottage houses were ranked at twenty-seven point eight percent. So this gives us an idea of the type of units that could possibly be included in a master plan, action plan to, to consider for the future, and then also then eventually into looking into modifying the zoning ordinance to allow for these type of housing. The, the type of, other types of housing that might, might fit in a single family neighborhood, such as duplexes or triplexes, they were relatively low on the survey. The residents only about a little over ten percent, and then only a little over five percent thought that that type of housing unit would be something that they would be considering within the city. And then we asked specifically the idea of accessory dwelling units, or back in the day, you used to call them mother-in-law units, or, you know, those that, having a single, principal, single family structure on the site, and then having another dwelling unit that's separate on the site, on, on the same residential lot. So actually, a majority of the, the most people did say they probably did not feel appropriate about having dwelling units. But they did say, if, if they were to have them, over thirty-five percent felt that carriage home styles, meaning a standalone structure in, in a rear yard would be appropriate, or converting a garage. One thing we note is that, you know, when it comes to this kind of discussion, I had the discussion sometimes, and when we get to the downtown question, about the, the certain characteristics of accessory dwelling units that might be acceptable. For example, a lot of communities have experimented with accessory dwelling units by making sure that there's no visible attribute on the principal structure of the accessory dwelling unit. So it's, looks just like a single family home, but some, but either the, so then the entrance for the accessory dwelling unit is in the rear or the side, or it is completely concealed by the principal structure on site. So that's.
For an accessory dwell, dwelling?
Yes, I believe, yeah. In terms of that standard.
That would include the.
Standards. Communities have been willing to embrace the different housing types by making sure that they have more specified design standards. That's something that we'll definitely be recommending within the master plan, and then, and then if we get the zoning ordinance amendments, for in any of these type of units. Making sure that these are designed to be of a high quality with not only materials, but architectural details is going to be very important. And then finally, we, we did talk about housing in the downtown Garden City, you know, what housing would be appropriate. We had our presentation of the different types of structures, whether it's a three-story building that's all residential, three-story with. There were over twenty percent that favored a four-story mixed use, and even some were willing to go, like over nineteen percent supported a five-story mixed use. So to me, that means that they're very sensitive about the scale and mass of a building, not wanting it to feel overpowering. And the good thing is zoning ordinances can be written to minimize that. I, I presented it to some people when I was there at the open house. So these reflection, these survey responses might not have the benefit of that knowledge about zoning standards, meaning that fourth or fifth story requiring a ten-foot or fifteen-foot setback on that fourth or fifth story, so that when people are walking along the street, it, it looks like a three-story building. That's what happens with the Mayflower Building in Plymouth. Theirs is a little different, because theirs required a mansored. Theirs is a little different, because theirs required a mansard, a.
Mansard roof.
Yeah, man, well, I guess it is a mansard roof up there. That, and, you know, there are alternative ways we could allow for a four-story or five-story mixed-use rule or something like that, so that way, public hearings. So, you have the rest of the data in front of you. I just wanted to point out those highlights. From, we will be taking this data and using it to formulate the rest of the master plan amendment. Where we'll be talking about taking these ideas and how to develop them into action plan, by first evaluating our existing structure, our existing ordinances, and evaluating our existing housing stock, identifying locations which, where these sites, the residents have told us they could be acceptable, and then the different housing types. And then through a, through a bulleted list and other recommendations, the action plan of the master plan will present the planning commission with suggestions on how to implement some of these that would be allow for different housing types in the city, but making sure that the residents' opinions are met in there. So, that's, we're working on that now, and that'll be something coming up at a future meeting.
Chairperson May.
Yes.
I just, I find it interesting on your second page around the location in the greater Detroit region. I always think of that as a strength of Garden City, just us kinda being in the middle of everything. And I just wonder, and depending upon how you process all of the feedback and turn it into a proposal, if there is like this flywheel effect of, because of our location, because of our downtown, if we were to increase the number of floors that we allowed a developer to produce a complex that brings life to the downtown, it just seems like there's a, there could be a story here for how these, how we leverage these strengths to bring people downtown, to bring life to downtown.
Mm-hmm. That's definitely what we're gonna attempt to do, and I pointed that out, because in my head, because I think, I can't remember who, but someone at the open house pointed it out. It's the fact that, you know, you think about like Royal Oak or Ferndale, or, well, you can think further of Birmingham. You know, proximity to downtown, and when people wanna go to a game, or if people wanna have an event, they can hop on the freeway and get there, and then it takes them about twenty minutes, but their distance. Right here, you can hop on Ford Road, you can be downtown pretty quick. It's by, what, fifteen minutes, maybe? If that, I haven't done it lately, from right here.
Twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, twenty-five.
In almost any, unless there's construction and.
Even if you.
One lane on ninety-four.
Oh, right, now, once you get into the city, you know. So, you know that.
Lancing, I mean, just.
Yeah, you can go in any direction and be someplace pretty quick.
But even people that are in close proximity to downtown Plymouth or downtown Northville, they're definitely taking longer to get to downtown Detroit.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, that idea of, you know, we, we probably aren't gonna do a full-blown marketing analysis for particular residents, we're gonna do a market analysis of the square footage of, in the commercial aspect of land uses in the city. But, you know, it could be something that, as an attribute, that, you know, people would be, like saying they wanna have a nice, what I always term a Midwest-style downtown, where it's a little bit of a slower place, but then have direct, have convenient access to a major metropolitan downtown area. So, you know, that might be some way that we could, that, that people that are gonna propose these type of buildings could market their sites.
The idea of condos with retail on the first floor.
Right.
On the former Kmart property, sounds kind of attractive, because, you know, we spent quarter of a million dollars thirty-five years ago on the Hyatt Palma study to make us a walkable city. We've moved in that direction little by little by having front doors now placed on Ford Road. Most of them aren't being used, but they're there. If this, if it was a more walkable, if there are more things to attract people walking, I think putting a residential complex along with some mixed retail, that site's certainly large enough. What is it, six and a half or seven?
Well, it's about six acres itself, when you include the other adjacent property that's not under ownership, it is about seven.
But I think the other thing we need to consider is what kind of investors we're gonna get in here. We need to be able to appeal to those guys, too, to be able to build. With building costs now, their profits are from floors three, four, and five. One and two pay for pretty much the construction, so.
We found that out three years ago, and an apartment complex got nixed because of that, because they couldn't make a profit at two and a half stories.
Nothing's getting any cheaper right now, so it's like we almost need to increase this. Depending on the lot, they wanna put it on where it's at, we should consider going up to, you know, four or five stories to get more investors interested, instead of stuff sitting vacant forever.
Yep.
I agree.
Yeah, go higher than that.
Right, so that's what dictated, but it was about three or.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's already quite a few units there, and he wanted to add even more, and had the land to do it, and the parking and everything else. He says, couldn't make a profit at two and a half, so he walked away from the whole thing. Nothing ever got built.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we wanna increase our population density, we don't have that many empty lots. The only place we can go is up.
Right? And that would be a way to do it.
Yep.
So, maybe something for a future topic to look at that heights requirement.
Oh, absolutely, yes, it's gonna be part of the proposal.
Five stories next to my house in R1, but we've got a whole bunch of places where that could work.
Okay, are we all set with that master plan discussion?
Yeah.
Next item is scheduling of public hearings. We have requests for public hearings for the following. First one is special land use public hearing to consider an adult-use marijuana grower, processor, and retailer at thirty-two, three, thirty Ford Road. This is the existing.
Correct. This is existing medical marijuana. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
This site already has a license for a medical marijuana grow, process, and provisioning center. They have chosen not to open at this time, but they have submitted an application they'd like to go through the process to be allowed to do adult-use marijuana.
Okay. We need to take a motion to set a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to set a public, oh, go ahead.
Just when do we get more context on?
So, the, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, please.
You know, so this is you authorizing us to begin setting up for the public hearing, so we will advertise, make the arrangements to, with the Detroit News to advertise, we will send out the mailers, and then, as is standard, one week prior to the April meeting, you will receive a packet with all their submittal documents and the review letter of the, of the, of the application and whether it meets the requirements of the ordinance.
So, just for example, it references grower, oh, it does say retailer, okay. All right.
That's where they all wanna be.
So, need a motion to set a public hearing?
Go ahead.
Wait, I'll second, you were about to make.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have that brought up as, or established as a public hearing, please.
Support.
And that date would be our next regular meeting?
April tenth. April tenth. Right, the first vote is Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is special land use public hearing to consider a gas station and drive-through restaurant at, drive-through restaurant at thirty-one, four, zero, six Ford Road.
Where is, where is that next to?
So, this is the northwest corner of Ford and Merriman, and so this is a site that was recently rezoned from C2 and multifamily to a completely C2.
Codified the zoning there, didn't we?
So, instead of the car wash we talked about when you bought it last time, now it's a drive-through restaurant?
Well, it would be a gas station, and they wanna have a drive-through window on the site.
At the gas station.
At the gas station, yep. So, they wanna, they're proposing, so.
Any discussion? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion for a special land use hearing to consider a gas station, drive-through restaurant at three-one-four-zero-six Ford Road for public hearing.
Support.
Support? Comments? I'm gonna take your role, please.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters. First, Mr. Ortega, do you have anything else for us?
Nope, nothing else.
Steenberg? Just one thing. I went through some of my previous papers. This is the site on Pardo that's going to have awnings and plastic shutters. Very dissatisfied with it, from this drawing, that it doesn't bear any resemblance at all. Although I think it'll probably look acceptable having plastic shutters and awnings over the doors, it's not even close to what we approved. And I don't understand why we sit up here and go back and forth with all these details in some meetings with a small group, we have multiple meetings at this table, and then it goes ahead and gets built totally from, after all that, after all that conversation and going back and forth and getting everybody's opinions and fine-tuning it with the owners and the architects and the engineers and everything else, and it gets built totally different. I don't understand why we allow this.
I think the way to avoid that next time, instead of approving, us approving a proposed elevation that shows us, I think they actually need to bring us a stamped set of plans that is what they're gonna build. Not an idea, that was an idea. So, I think the problem is we need to stop approving ideas if we want to see what they're actually bringing to us.
I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
As far as the elevations are concerned.
Correct.
We get a set of stamped plans, but the elevations aren't necessarily the final thing.
Right. They're kinda subject to change as long as within our building codes, I mean.
On both these elevations, it shows a portion of the front facade as being proud of the rest of the building by guesstimate of ten to twelve inch. We have a completely flat building on all four sides. There is nothing proud whatsoever. This elevation, looking at the original elevation with the combination of the black, and it could be real wood siding, or it could be vinyl siding, which mock wood, you can hardly tell the difference until you get five feet away. And then with the horizontal element on the vinyl siding, I thought this looked spectacular. It looks new, it looks modern.
There is, there is a stamp on that sheet.
Yeah, but that's not the one.
Did it say a proposed elevation, or is it actually the?
Conceptual front and parking elevation.
Conceptual, that's the key.
This was part of that.
We don't, we don't want conceptual, we want the final elevation.
Well, even this shows areas that are proud to the building, but.
No, it didn't turn out anything like what we approved. I agree.
This, this, I mean, looking at other locations in the state where I'm pretty sure the rent is higher than here, this is the type of construction I see over and over again. There's, there's, it's not a flat building. This actually looks like four individual buildings that just happen to be side by side. Now, I know you worked on it, Matt, and I know you worked on it, Mario, but I never wanna see this again as long as I sit here, or maybe I shouldn't sit here, because I never wanna see this again. I'm very disappointed in the outcome of that building. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Ortega. Okay.
I'd just support Commissioner Steenberg's comment, and recalling that there was some controversy from residents on this building, and that, you know, those of us who thought about it and wanted to do the right thing by the city kind of sold it as, hey, you know, this is gonna be a beautiful building.
Right.
It's up for the builder to change it.
We did a lot for this.
I maybe had one question on the topic. When it comes to the building department, are there gates, if you will, as to where, you know, a pallet of bricks gets dropped off? Are there any checkpoints that the building department has with a builder of a major development like this?
I have.
I'll just, hey, we'll see, let us know when you, we need your C of, certificate of occupancy.
So, there are definitely requirements in the building code for when inspections have to occur. So, that's in the building code, as a planner, I don't know what triggers them. I have talked about, and sometimes we have had pre-construction meetings where we talk about the, after the plan has been, the building permit has been issued, has, is going to be issued for a set of drawings. You know, I've, I've often tried to make sure that we have some kind of pre-construction meeting so that we coordinate everything, not only from a logistical construction standpoint, but making sure that we're all working for the same set of drawings. Because, and it's gotten better as we've included the digital plans, and the digital plans are included within our computer system, and they are attached to the properties, and then it's a matter of whether, when those are referenced in the reviews. I think maybe something we could do is look at making sure that the reviews of building electric, building electrical, mechanical plumbing reference the site plans, but it's, you know, a lot of times they don't delve into those issues because they're site-related, and the site plan and that sort of thing. Elevations, of course, are part of the building code, and it should be something that gets evaluated. One thing we do here is have our site plan review of a plan that isn't the final construction site plan, because then, because we do, you know, trying to be business-friendly, we let the applicants come in and do that. And so, it's beneficial, and it's worked, and a lot of the other things we've had set up work. For example, the multi-tenant building on Ford Road, a few blocks east of Inkster, that building did end up looking as, as was presented in the site plan. And so, those checks and balances worked, and how this one worked, you know. There are other things that we could, we could look into in terms of that, like, for example, applicant providing us with material samples prior to installation or something like that.
The applicant have to, if they change the elevation, they're not required to come back to the building department with an RFI? They're a stamped.
They're required to.
They're required to.
Whether they do or not.
Built, not to that elevation.
That was completed before they submitted any plans, before they were stopped. It was, well, it was two-thirds.
Then I guess at that point, we gotta make them tear it down. I mean, at the, at the point where they're not even gonna do the paperwork they need to do, and they're just gonna give us the entirely wrong elevation, if we keep letting them do it to be business-friendly, they're just gonna keep doing it.
Well, that's definitely, it wasn't any aspect of, of that review process. Like Matt said, they had the plans, and then while they were in the review process, the construction started, and then they, by the time that, by the time it was made aware.
How did they get the building permit?
The building permit was issued already, it wasn't in the review process, so the footing and foundation was done already.
But that elevation, the way it shows to the way it was built, it shouldn't even have passed a rough framing inspection, because the elevations are so different.
Well, the elevations as submitted are, are not what you have seen either. The plans were presented and approved with, basically, the plans that we had, had the brick to the first floor, brick on the side, and then it was a hardy plank in the front. It also did have five more gables across the front. Those were removed, you know, in the framing section, too. So, we, I mean, we were, our inspections were done at, at the intervals required, and.
So, what are the.
They did it between our inspections. We don't, the building department doesn't go out weekly, it cannot, unless, unless the.
Of course.
The council wants to change, and then that will also increase the fees.
So, so what are the ramifications if somebody does not build something to the blueprint? Are there fines, like if you put up a privacy fence without a permit, you get fined? Or you pay double the permit fee? Is there something to encourage these people to maybe do it as presented?
One possibility, and we don't see this anymore, we used to get samples of brick and siding and et cetera, building materials. and siding and et cetera, building materials would actually come in here. This is the brick we're going to use, here's a brick, this is the siding we're going to use.
But our rights are, our rights have been reduced, because we can't regulate those things, is, is not something we can regulate.
So I guess the next time that comes to us with that drawing, something like that, we put a motion, we could say contingent to the change of, the brick can only be on 70% of the building, and the rest has, like, we could do that here, correct? And we did, and we didn't.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be fairly simple to require the applicant to sign some kind of attestation before they break ground?
Yeah.
Of, you know, these are my final plans, I signed the attestation that they will not materially change from what's been presented. Do we do that, or is it all in the owner's system?
Uses in their building. Now, we do require everyone that has a certificate of occupancy to sign a use statement, so therefore, what's proposed, what their proposed business is, is the proposed business in the site. So we do that aspect of it, so it could be something that we could do, I mean, we'd have to.
This is the body that's making either the decision or the recommendation for city council, so you would think that when we agree to something with the applicant here, that's what sticks. So I, I might suggest, Mr. Ortega, if that's something you could think about, whether some kind of attestation, I don't know, Mr. Miller, if it's you, is there some kind of attestation document that we, upon our approval, that is now your role, is to sign that attestation to say that these plans will not materially change, or you will bring them back before the commission?
I, I think instead of making a rule, we, we have the plans adjusted. Like, I don't know if we put the photometric plan in that amendment, did we? For the previous construction of the building, did we?
The one on Monroe.
Oh, it was, the photometric plan was included in the paperwork.
It was in this, it was in here already.
It's, I've been thinking about that. Oh, we're not going to use the red brick, we're going to use this. Okay. I, I hate to make things more expensive for somebody when it doesn't need to be, but I think it needs to be. We're not approving it. Bring me back the new drawing. This is what you're building? Bring me that drawing with the AIA certified architect stamp right on the corner of it. Otherwise, no building permit gets issued, period. Because Garden City's a pushover city, guys. You do this in Dearborn, you ain't opening that building. Do this in Westland, you're not opening that building. Do it in Livonia, you're not opening that building. They're going to tell you to build it like that picture says.
I don't want to, you know, so we were left with what, I'm going to distribute just so you can see what, what was, some amendments that did finally come out of, you know, you, you get lemons, you have to make lemonade, and.
Yeah, I'm not blaming you or.
But I did want you to pass them out, and just so you had them, so that you know that, you know, we can't control, yeah, we can't control, take one of, take one and pass it down, I guess, we can't control what occurs out there, and the attestation sounds wonderful also. I've worked at a city hall for 31 years, and developers just do what they want. Some are good, some are bad. But I did want you to see that we took to heart your concerns. I, I was concerned also, I drive by it all the time also, and I was trying to look to add some features that would make it have some odulation of the facade, given individuality to each of the units. In the original plans that were approved, they had a common sidewalk along the front, a seven-foot wide sidewalk along the front, and in that site plan, you can see that it is now an individual, right down the front page, if you want to see, Commissioner King, that each one now has its own porch, its own service walk to the public walkway, and an individual tree in their front yard of each unit to take away the apartment-esque feel for it. The same facade is put on the back, and also at the end, at the top, kind of gable brackets to give it some, some character across the front. So, that's what the developer is doing to address our concerns, and you have that, and it will be built from what we see. If there's any change to that, I, I will give up, I guess. But, so I wanted you to see what was done and what is being done currently. Those pictures were taken this morning, probably about 8:30, and I know they continue to work the rest of the day, because the neighbor, of course, phoned us about the work, so.
Any changes are made without approval, don't give them their C of O.
Correct. We've had many conversations with the developer.
Yeah, I, I applaud what you guys came up with, to rectify something that you should have never had to rectify. So, in the future, we're going to try and make this where you don't have to help the builder build what he's supposed to build, because that's what it came down to. The onus ended up being on you guys to find a solution for why he didn't do what he was, said he was going to do with all the paperwork and all the meetings.
So did we, did we get a change through the building department showing it like this at one point or another?
No, they have now, yes.
Booked prior to it being brick to the roof?
No.
No.
And the inspector was out just to make sure that those changes meet the code also, you know, make sure it's attached to the header, exactly, so those things were done, so.
All right, then. Did you have anything else, Mr. Miller? Okay. The only question I had was about the 153 bar, you see they're tearing it down. Last I looked, the only thing left was the front wall.
Yeah, I thought only 20%.
Oh, really? They did that much?
I, I didn't believe so either, I, I didn't go back there, I saw part of it. Okay, well, we'll be lucky.
What I was asking was, do we know what's going to be there now?
Yeah, so their proposal was to, so the building, the existing building footprint occupied the entire lot there, which meaning it went all the way to the back to the alley. Their proposal is to, to take off the, the rear 20 feet of the existing building to, in order to create a parking on the site behind there, and then they're going to renovate the existing front facade on Ford Road, and then renovate the site into a multi-tenant building. And they have control of not only that building, but then also the adjacent lot with the former jewelry, and then they actually bought the, the individual lots that are the driveway off of that, between the jewelry store and the barber shop, and they actually bought the barber shop too. So they're in the control of that entire site of that, and the benefit of that is then their, their customers for the multi-tenant building will have direct access off of Ford Road. That was always the issue, is anytime anybody did anything, they couldn't, they officially didn't have access to those others, so they were proposing, you know, the people would have to use the alley to get back there or find somewhere else to park. So this is a much more comprehensive approach, the entire site, but to best of my, now, it could be that maybe the.
The middle was gone, though, the problem is, is that a good portion, the center of the structure was, the roof had collapsed, so.
Right.
And maybe, unfortunately, probably what they're dealing with too.
And it could be that, that too, that, you know, for the longest time, the city has been fighting with the owners and, and to deal with it because of the fire. The fire damaged on the west side of the building, and the problem was the owners miraculously changed hands, and then we had to, because of the state law, we had to start over from square one, when they, when the owners change. And so that's what happened each time. I mean, it was in front of, the building official did his best he could, because he was putting them in front of condemnation hearings, and he was going to condemn the building, and then somebody showed up, oh, I'm going to do this. We wanted them to, you know, the, the plan seemed viable, and they were approved, they were issued a building permit, and then, oh, they changed ownership again. So unfortunately, the can kicked down the road, and we come to it. This owner, now he, at least now he's doing it, and I get the feeling, and I'm not, I'm not a building official or a structural engineer, but I would think kicking the can down the road that long, that fire damage suddenly became a lot worse than what it was initially due to the weather. So, it most, it might have resulted in the, in the construction, in the collapse of the middle of the structure, and therefore then, instead of just taking off the rear 20 foot, they probably had to keep going and going.
Well, I, I can't say exactly how much they've taken off the building.
They're supposed to have it, like you said, a specific, like, line to allow for a sidewalk and to allow for parking and access to the door.
And what's, do we know what's going to go in there afterwards?
It's a multi-tenant commercial building, multi-tenant commercial.
Oh, okay.
TBD. I do have one other item.
Yeah.
Just the volunteer appreciation dinner has been canceled, and so if you have responded, that, I think you received the email, but I just wanted to let everyone know that we don't have a proposed date for another one, but it's been canceled this time, so, so you have another night off this month.
Okay.
All righty.
Okay, next regular planning commission meeting is Thursday, April 10, 2025, and I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, support.
Motion made and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most meetings adjourned. Thank you.